Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Temple ISD Board of Trustees, held here on June 10th, 2024, beginning at 6:00 PM. Our first item is the call to order. Second item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everybody please stand up and face the American flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Item three is public comments. No one signed up? Okay. Item four, super tennis recognition. Members will be, please come in front of the dais. Item eight is the principal pipeline.
Yes, if we can have, I see Mrs. Slay. I don't see Mr. Slay. Mr. Hernandez and Ms. Mitchell come forward, please. We have one of the three.
Mrs. Slay, I will be giving you the wrong.
Yes. You're here, you might as well. Investing in growth is one of the core commitments at the heart of our leadership framework, designed through the Holdsworth Collaborative. Growing our current team members to expand their leadership capacity creates an internal pipeline and potential paths for succession across the district. Campus principals play a critical role in a school district as they directly support the work of our teachers and oversee student learning. For this reason, Temple ISD elected to focus our initial efforts to grow our current leaders by developing a principal pipeline for assistant principals so that they can be ready to apply for future potential principal openings. Our principal pipeline program has just completed its first year of implementation and included identifying high potential candidates and providing these assistant principals with focused opportunities to grow in key areas identified as necessary for campus leaders. We are pleased to highlight our first cohort of high potential principal pipeline participants. We have LaRon Slay, Assistant Principal at Lamar Middle School, Ike Hernandez, Assistant Principal at Temple High School, and Courtney Mitchell, Assistant Principal at Temple High School. Please join us in congratulating these leaders for their commitment to excellence and self-development.
I think Christine did an excellent job. But we are just so very proud of their, of the growth of these leaders. They, this is above and beyond assistant principal work and duties. This is really thinking about what it feels like and looks like to be a principal of a campus and to take charge of those things. Super grateful to their principals for allowing them the opportunity to grow. But they definitely just did an amazing job really looking at what it looks like to be a principal, and we look forward to seeing them continue to grow. So they did an excellent job, and they survived our first cohort, which is kind of always like a guinea pig too. So they're, we're really proud of them.
Item B is a Senate proclamation. I'm sorry. All right. Item B is Senate proclamation from Pete Flores, State Senator, District 24. The tiny houses. Tiny house.
We received a Senate resolution from Senator Pete Flores for the work that was done with the tiny house. And so tonight, we just want to be able to read that and honor the work that was done. So we will read the resolution, and so I apologize upfront because it's resolution language, but just hang with me. So, whereas construction technology students at Temple High has greatly distinguished themselves by building a fully functioning tiny home, and whereas led by construction technology teacher Stephen Bishop, Temple High School students designed and constructed nearly every aspect of the tiny home, learning valuable trades and skills along the way. And whereas the project originally began in 2021 after Mr. Bishop tasked his students with designing a tiny home as a final exam assignment. He subsequently decided to bring the idea to life, and after receiving a grant from the Temple Education Foundation, in the fall, planning and building commenced. In the years since, more than 200 students have contributed to the construction of the tiny home following its completion. The tiny home was put up for auction, and all proceeds from its sale have been earmarked for building more tiny homes. And whereas, the construction technology students at Temple High have demonstrated exceptional dedication in the pursuit of their goals, and they are indeed deserving of special recognition. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Stephen Bishop and the construction technology students at Temple High School be commended for their efforts in building a tiny home, and all those involved with the project be extended sincere best wishes for continued success in all their endeavors. Pete Flores, State Senator, District 24. Congratulations.
I know several of you had the opportunity to go to the event, and it was really moving, by the way. And Mr. Bishop's remarks were really, really moving. I mean, just extraordinary. But want to thank you for investing in our students, but more importantly, for teaching them how to invest in their community. So congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
You bet. Thank you. And thank you for your leadership, Ms. Bartlett.
I can't follow you, so no thank you.
Item five is executive hires. A introduction of new assistant principals. Jefferson Elementary, Thornton Elementary, Travis Science Academy. Dr. Ward.
And are y'all staying there?
Yeah, we're staying here for this.
Okay. You're just throwing me off guard, but that's all right. Okay, so Dr. Torres Rivera, where are you? Oh, come on up. Okay. So Dr. Torres Rivera is going to be our new assistant principal at Jefferson, hired by Ms. Amanda Slay, her very first hire. Dr. Torres Rivera came from Colleen ISD, but she, I'm assuming, got here as fast as you could. To Temple ISD, yes. So she actually has moved up in the ranks. She was a paraprofessional in Colleen ISD, a teacher in Colleen ISD. I'm assuming you moved to Hawaii after you became a teacher because you were a resource teacher in Hawaii, and then came back, and she was an instructional coach and assistant principal in Colleen. And, and she's currently the instructional coach, literacy coach at Thornton Elementary, and will be moving into the assistant principal role at Jefferson. So we are super excited to recognize you tonight, and, and welcome to Jefferson.
Congratulations.
Oh, I didn't, were y'all doing the wave? I didn't know.
Oh, yes. My fan club, my husband Hyman Torres, my daughter Jalainne Torres, my stepdaughter Kamali, and my hus, my son, Jeriel, sorry. But yes, and then my principal, my friends from the IC world, my former principal, Ms. Rhodes. So yes.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay, Sabrina Reynolds, come on up. Okay, Sabrina probably has more energy in her little toe than all of us combined in this room. She is currently the instructional coach at Ray Allen, and she is going to be moving to be the, the assistant principal at Thornton Elementary. They're just kind of switching roles. And she has served in Temple for a very long time. She was a third grade teacher. She was a literacy coach. I hired her at Scott and then left, and she won't let me forget that part. But she is very much committed to Temple ISD, and we're so proud of your accomplishments in Temple. You're welcome.
Congratulations.
Okay, I have my wonderful husband. Sorry, I'm going to get emotional, okay. And I have my son and my daughter. And just all the people that, over the last 14 years, have just carried me and supported me and loved me in so many ways and handled my energy. So I appreciate you all, and I'm so grateful to all of you.
And then Candace Martin. And are you Dr. Martin now?
I'm sort of excited.
Okay, Dr. Martin. I know she was working on her doctorate when she was here in Temple before. But anyway, she is one of our, she'll be the new assistant principal at Travis Science Academy. She was an assistant principal at Temple High School, kind of lost her mind for a minute and left, and went to Roy City. But she is coming back to be the assistant principal at Travis Science Academy, and she has served as a teacher in Temple, English teacher, I believe, at the high school. And prior to that, she was an English teacher at Conley Junior High. And, and so we're just super excited to have you back.
Thank you.
It looks like Travis has a mask on.
Oh, yes. And you guys want to come up and have your picture made? Okay. You gotta lead your horse to the trough there.
Do you have anybody on any leash?
No. But I'll say something.
So my family didn't come with me because they said this is old news, but like almost everybody in here I know, so thank you so much. I'm happy to be back.
Step down, step down. There you go. No workers come. And that's all I have. Thank you so much.
All right. Item six is the Board of Presidents' Report. A future item discussion. Is there any items y'all wish to discuss at future board meeting? All right. Item B is important dates, and Dr. Ott.
Okay, this will be really quick. June 12th, this Wednesday, we have a special board meeting, and that will be over expenditures. And then June 13th, Thursday, we have the school board retreat. That's the Learning Circle activity that Shannon Myers, Virginia, and Don will take us through. And we'll have principals there, and Lisa will just remind them the day before to come as well. Staff holiday, and then our committee meetings. And then we have another special board meeting, June 26th, and that is, I believe, to adopt the budget. So, yeah, it's all coming quick. So, all right, that's all I have. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Ott. Item seven is consent items. I do know item G involves the city of Temple, so that's what, we'll pull that one. So basically, right now, we have A through F, G through H. Is there a motion to deal with these items?
I make a motion to approve 7A through 7F altogether.
And G?
And H.
And G and H.
G and H, one.
Motion by Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Davis. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Now we'll take item G, summer transportation with city of Temple. Is there a motion?
I'll make tip red.
Motion by Ms. Galwin.
A second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cook with Ms. Suarez abstaining. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign. The ayes have it with one abstention. Thank you. Item eight, action items. A human resources. No items tonight, Dr. Ward, okay. Item B, academics. One advanced academics update.
Good evening. Dr. Ott, President Posey, school board members. Tonight, Dr. Rogers and I are here to update you on all the work our advanced academics departments have been doing. And we know that work starts down at our kindergarten level. And as we continue our work, always growing our kids, getting them to on-level work, we do know that there is a population of students that are already there, and they're advanced. And so making sure that we meet their needs as well as all the other students' needs is very important to us, and that starts with identification in our gifted and talented program as kindergartners. Then also, in elementary, we do have STEM that we've been working to infuse into the GT curriculum as well. As we advance into middle school, they offer advanced classes in all the core content areas. And then moving into high school, there's advanced classes for our ninth and 10th graders. And of course, we have our IB program that is elementary through high school as well. In high school, they offer dual credit, AP classes, and Texas Bioscience. So this evening, we're going to be highlighting the work that we've been doing throughout the last couple of years. The first thing, and so these are our bullets that will talk about our mission. We're going to highlight those things that we're doing and our next steps, and then we'll ha, and then we'll close with that. So, the National Association for Gifted Students says that a good identification for your school district is there should be at least 10% of your students identified for talented and gifted program. And so if you can look back, we've been really working on this for the last four years. In 2021, as you can see, we only had 3% of our students identified at that time. So it's been a focus that we're training our staff, that we're training teachers, principals, so that they can identify, because we know giftedness looks different in all students. It doesn't look one way, it's not a cookie cutter. And so the first thing we have to do is be able to recognize who those students are. And I'm proud to say that it's after this past year, about 11% of our students, we've now identified for our talented gifted program. So it's grown quite a bit, so we're very proud of that. And then this just gives you some highlights and some pictures of things we're, we're doing. Our curriculum that we use for our GT program is engineering and education, and then the kids work on their Texas Performance Standards projects. And so what you can see up here is a couple of different things. The first thing that, there, this is one specific thing. It was with Garcia, they're working on creating some kind of mechanism, a basket or something, so that when they, when they put their egg in it and they drop it, it keeps it safe. So that's one of their creative design projects they're working on. And then the other picture, these students were working on learning about the effects of pollinators in the environment. So they were releasing butterflies on that particular day. Also, because, you know, the eclipse was a big topic this year, our fifth graders did a lot of research on that, and they got to choose something related to that in that field. And this particular student wanted to research black holes in space. So this was them presenting their research project there. We also, with all the elementary schools, they got to choose, the GT kids chose their book that they wanted to read and share with friends. And so then they did a parade of floats, like the Macy's Day Parade. So that's one of those pictures. And then our kindergarten, one of the engineering and education units for kindergarten is all about bubbles. So they learn how bubbles behave. They investigate the different materials you can use to make bubbles, how to design their own bubbles. And here, they had to first look at different materials, design their own particular bubble wand, so that they could create the bubbles that they had studied. And then there are some pictures of what I talked about previous, where we're trying to really work on that infusing STEM into our GT curriculum as well. So first grade, what they did, they took the story, Three Little Pigs, and then they had to engineer and design the home that could not be blown down. And they had to prove it with their research that they had studied. Fourth grade did a bit of a different twist on that. They had to design a zoo. So they had to think about what animals they wanted in their zoo. They first had to draw a blueprint, and then they created their, their miniature model of their zoo. And then fifth graders, they were learning how to code so they could manipulate robots. And then the IB exhibition, they really focused this year on caring for the environment. And so this was one of the, several of the projects. One of them was collecting plastic bottles, and they developed, they built that big heart just to save them and recycle them in. They studied poaching and the effects of poaching on the environment, that's that middle picture. And then the younger students studied ocean pollution. Then last week was pretty neat. We offered two different camps, enrichment camps for our students. The first one was Camp Invention, and that was for our GT students. And this year's theme was eliminate. And so during the week, long camp, they talked about teamwork, how to work as a team, because that's something that we know going into businesses outside. Usually, you don't work by yourself anymore, so it's the first thing that they really talked about. They learned leadership skills, and how and when they take roles in their projects that they were working on, and then that creativity piece. And so one of the groups, you can see there, they were designing their own board game. And then the other group had to design a tool, a new tool for the garage, and then they had to build it. And so that's on your left-hand side. Then on the right side, I'm very excited about this, we offered our first STEM camp. And we had a lot of kids sign up for that. I think there was about 40 kids that participated. We had about 50 that signed up. So we're really thinking about how we can expand that so we can get more kids involved in this. But what was exciting about the STEM camp is that they were working on learning specifically binary coding. They were also talking about how businesses develop and utilize robots. They made some like real-world connections to like, so for example, Amazon in their warehouses, how they build those robots to move the packages around and get them to where they need to go, and how to code those robots to get them to go to the right aisles, then to the delivery truck. And the kids had a lot of fun. When I was over there, they were hooping and hollering and just competing. And so that last picture you can see down there, so each day, they, they increased like what they were going to do with their robot. And so on this particular day, they had to design a robot that was going to compete against another robot, pick up a box, and then get out one of the sides of the board there. So they were having a lot of fun with that.
Good evening, Dr. Ott, Mr. Posey, and members of the board. I'm going to continue with the secondary portion of the presentation. And usually, I share some kind of data about the number of kids who've passed tests or earned college credit. And I'm going to share some data with you, but I also want to highlight some of our student and teacher experiences, and even some of the things that we've been working with our leaders. And so I'll start with Carnegie, which was a consent item, actually, on the agenda today. Last year was our first year using the Carnegie Math Program. It's a very rigorous instructional program for math, and it was not purchased with the intent to support middle school academic, advanced academics, but Carnegie Math takes care of Algebra I, Geometry and Algebra II. And we do have students at the middle school who are taking Algebra I. And so they have seen the benefits of that course. And so I'll share with you, on the right-hand side, because we're talking about middle school, we saw, just in the short time that we were using Carnegie at the middle schools, we saw a significant double-digit increase in the performance of students on interim from spring of 2023 to fall of 2023. And so you can see there, even at Lamar, we had a 43% increase in student performance on the interim assessment. And then, we actually, to summarize that and how that translates to the end of the year, we had, this is the first time in a while that we've had two middle school campuses that had 100% performance at approaches on the STAR test. And then, on the left-hand side, you see the impact of Carnegie at our high school level. One of the components of Carnegie is a program called Mathia, where students work individually on personalized instruction on a digital platform. And so Mr. Luke, who's the advanced Algebra II teacher at the high school, was excited to challenge his students to meet their goal of completing 80% of the program by the end of the year. And so here, he sent this to me probably mid-March, but by the end of the year, all of his advanced Algebra II classes had completed that, that goal and that expectation. And then one of the most exciting pieces, again, we didn't purchase Carnegie with the intent for it to be targeted towards advanced academics, but it is a rigorous, rigorous program. And so one of the most exciting things is that because of the success that we saw on the interim, Carnegie asked to feature Temple ISD and our middle schools and their nationwide blog. And so this is a snip from the article that was written about Coach Magayan, who is that middle school teacher, algebra I teacher at Lamar Middle School. I want to update you on the dual-credit initiative progress. I know that this has been a work in progress since before COVID, when we had our partnership meeting with the Temple ISD School Board and the Temple College School Board. And so we have moved full steam ahead, I think, in increasing dual-credit opportunities for our students at the high school. And so our collaboration with Temple College continues. We've had meetings with Dr. Ponse, with Dr. Susan Guzman Trevino. We actually have a meeting coming up this summer to update our progress and discuss what our future actions will be. Dr. Adams and I have worked intensively with the high school to really help them set goals for this dual-credit initiative, because an initiative like this really has to be pushed at the high school level. And so we've worked with the counselors, we've worked with the associate principal and the principal to really make sure that they have a clear vision of what they want this to look like and how they can accomplish it. Temple College has, for two years in a row now, provided us with a liaison. And I remember that being something that we And I remember that being something that we talked about during that partnership meeting before COVID, that we wanted somebody that could help our students to be successful in their dual-credit courses. And so Mr. Marcus Bell is our liaison from Temple College, and he comes every Monday and meets with students. Sometimes he's helping them with applications. Sometimes he's just giving students information if they're curious about dual-credit. Sometimes he's helping students who are shown to be having difficulty. But that's been a tremendous help for our campus to have somebody who knows Temple College and can support students in that way. We have learned that our students are most successful in dual-credit when a Temple High School teacher is in front of them. And so some of our students are successful when they're being taught by a Temple College instructor, but our students really do well with a Temple High School instructor. And so Dr. Mayo's really done a good job of recruiting teachers to, who have master's degrees, to be able to submit applications that will allow them to teach dual-credit courses. And so we're really excited about that. You see two examples of that on your screen. Julie Garza is our dual-credit U.S. History teacher. And then Emily Cloud sent me the picture of the students who are sitting in the group setting. And the thing that I like about these pictures is that normally when you think about a college class, students are sitting in rows and the teacher's at the front doing direct teach. But again, our students are successful outside of that traditional format of instructional delivery. Our teachers are trained in best practices for instruction, and they're applying those to the dual-credit setting. And so you see collaboration, you see blended learning happening, all those things that benefit our students and help them to be successful.
And Anna, has the college been more cooperative in working with us through that process, including our teachers?
Yes, they were very responsive. We sent them a list. I collected all the teachers' transcripts and all that information and met with Dr. Trevino probably two or three times to review those and identify which teachers were, met the criteria to be evaluated by the department level. And so they've been very responsive and quick to approve those teachers.
And they give a stipend?
Yes, they do receive a stipend. Additionally, we have, again, this ties back to our liaison support. We have increased registration for 2024, '25. And so with Mr. Bell being there to give students more information about dual-credit, the counselor's pushing out information about this dual-credit initiative, we have about 40 kids that are going to be taking dual-credit classes next year that probably would not have been taking dual-credit courses if we had not made this extra effort. Now, the high school is seeking to increase that, I think probably to about 80, if I remember correctly. And part of that ties into our TSI assessment support so that students meet the requirements to actually take the dual-credit course. But we're really excited about that progress. Ultimately, we want our students to exit the high school with college credits. And so I wanted to share this picture of the bioscience courting ceremony because I know that most of you weren't able to attend because there was a TEF event. And so we had about 10 students that received their cords in May. At the same time that we were ramping up our efforts for dual-credit, I learned about a program called Onramps through University of Texas at Austin. And so I started to think about the performance of our students on AP tests. And there are some tests that students do really well on, but there's some tests that they don't. And AP Statistics is one of those assessments. And so you'll see the data on your screen. In 2021 and 2022, no students scored high enough to earn college credit in AP Statistics. And in 2023, I think that 14% is probably one student. And so I, I learned about the Onramps program and thought, what if our students participated in Onramps and could actually finish statistics at the college level and complete with a credit from the University of Texas at Austin? So Dr. Adams approved, we had our teachers trained, we changed all the kids from AP Statistics to Onramps, and just sent a letter over the summer informing them of that change. And the beauty of Onramps is that it's a year-long class, where normally college courses are just for a semester. And so the students are able to learn the high school content layered underneath the college content. And so it moves at a slower pace and really supports the students with being successful. So I am super excited to say that 66% of the students that took the Onramps Statistics course earned a college credit from the University of Texas at Austin. And then we have, Advanced Precal is not a credit-bearing course for college, but I thought, I bet our kids could do that. I bet our kids that are taking Advanced Precal could walk out with a college credit. And so here you see that where we've never had kids earn Precal credit, we had 34% of those students earn credit. And so at the end of the school year in May, I got to go to those classrooms and give students their cords for completing the Onramps program if they were seniors.
Are we looking into other content areas?
Yes, yes, sir. We have added physics to our Onramps course offering, and Ms. Guleria is going to teach that course. I wanted to share just a couple of pictures. I asked the high school for just pictures of student experiences throughout the year. And so Mr. Stratman's class is always a fun place to be. And here they're working with acids and bases, and there's a rainbow lab going on. So this is very exploration, exploratory in nature, I'm sorry. And students just had a great time looking at the changes to the chemicals as they added different substances to the mixtures. Ms. Beddick is our advanced English teacher at the 11th grade. And so she did an activity with her students after their Great Gatsby unit. And so she was proud of that. She got all dressed up. She decorated her room. Her kids got dressed up. And there was a culminating end-of-unit activity where students had a menu, and that's not food on there. Those are assignments that students are completing based on that Great Gatsby theme. But again, teachers going above and beyond and creating engaging experiences for students in our advanced courses.
But she had a party?
Mm-hmm. They had a good time. And then last but not least, I would like to share with you summer activity that we had just last week on Tuesday and Wednesday. We had two teachers from Travis who facilitated a Lego camp. And we had about 35 students participate, most of them advanced academic students. And so this is a great opportunity for them to engage in STEM learning. They were doing some experiments with force and motion in a real-world context, building models with their Legos. And they each got to walk away with their own Lego kit that they could take home and do some more building with. And so we're excited about that. And like Dr. Watson said with her robotics camp, the hope is that we can invite more students to attend next year.
So if we're thinking about going forward and continuing to grow our advanced academics program in elementary, one of the things that we will be offering next year is the opportunity for our elementary students to take the Baylor tip. And so Dr. Rogers has actually already sent that to secondary parents. So she's going to talk about that here in a second. But we have been talking about this throughout the year with my coordinators and my GT teachers. And then at our parent focus group at the end of April, several parents asked for it. So I was happy to be able to report that this is something that we're going to offer for kids, and that made the parents very happy. We're going, we are expanding our curriculum into adding hands-on equations for the GT. And that focuses really into algebra because one of the things that I feel strongly about, and we talk a lot about with my elementary students, that the work we do at elementary has to lay the foundation. And if we don't do it well, they will not be as successful in middle school and high school, or we're making our jobs for our middle school and high school teachers a lot harder. And so one of the things that we thought with adding this hands-on equation that's going to give them a jumpstart into the world of algebra. We want to continue to maintain our number of students that have been identified for our gifted program. And then next year, we're planning on a common GT experience for all of our students. One of the things that research says that our students really need these opportunities where they can work together with like-minded individuals. And so we're going to be planning an academic Olympiad and bringing all elementary students together, our older students, to compete against each other one day in the future. So you'll be notified of that. So I hope you can visit us. And then, of course, we're working on supporting our IB recertification. And that will be happening in this upcoming school year. And I'm excited to also share that we are going to add the STEM lab at Sampson Howard. So now just beyond two campuses, Thornton and KP, we will also have that experience for our students at Sampson Howard. Also, our STEM, Scope and Sequence is also expanding. And you can see up there our tech apps, which go kindergarten through eighth grade. And we're really focusing in on those computational skills, being innovative, things that we're already doing with our, like our summer learning camps, enrichment camps. And then finally, we're going to host a robotics competition with our elementary students. So now that they've had some experience with coding and our kids, students across all campuses participated, that was one of the things that we were really excited about, that we had representation from every elementary campus. And so we're going to have a robotics competition coming up next year.
At the secondary level, we've talked a bit this evening about STEM, and we know that the M in STEM is mathematics. And the state has really recognized that we may be doing students a disservice by not offering Algebra I sooner in their academic journey. And so a student who takes Algebra I in the ninth grade is only going to make it to Precal or Statistics. And if we want to produce a workforce that's going to be able to engage in a STEM career, then they really need a higher-level math in high school. And so the state has passed legislation in Senate Bill 2124 that requires all school districts to enroll the top 60th percentile of students on the fifth-grade STAR test. Those students must be enrolled in advanced math in the sixth grade. Now, Temple ISD already had an advanced math program. Along those lines, we just didn't have the cut score quite at 60, the 60th percentile. And so we have probably about 20 to 30 more kids that will be added that ordinarily would not have been. But there are some districts that did not have an advanced math program with an opportunity for Algebra I at all in middle school, and Senate Bill 2124 mandates that. And so we're excited about giving our students the opportunity to be able to start Algebra I in the eighth grade so that when they get to high school, they can get to a course like Calculus and then pursue post-secondary STEM career. Dr. Watson mentioned the Baylor-Tip partnership. Some of you may be familiar with advanced academics from years ago when the Duke-Tip program was in place. And once COVID happened, Duke-Tip dissolved and is no longer in existence. And so Baylor University is seeking to fill that gap. And we've had some conversations with them about, at the very least, exposing our students and our families to the opportunities that Baylor offers. And so as Dr. Watson said, I did send some communication out to parents about students being able to take the Baylor tip assessment, as well as some of the summer activities that our students could participate in through the Baylor tip program and partnership. Also, similar to elementary, Travis is up for IB NYPD recertification. And so that's a big goal that we have to complete this year. And Dr. Watson and I actually are slated to meet with one of the IB administrators sometime this summer for a district-level administrator meeting just to make sure that we're on the right track. One of the things that we've noticed in our middle schools is that as we've had this turnover of teachers, we've kind of lost this understanding of what advanced academics means. And when we don't have strong advanced academics at the middle school level, even though there's not an AP or an IB in front of it, it really makes the work for our 11th and 12th grade teachers of AP and IB courses much more difficult. And so we are going to have an advanced academics training specific for middle school teachers this summer. And we're going to provide some more curriculum support to help those teachers to be more successful in teaching those courses. We'll continue with the High School College Ready Plan, which I talked about a little bit. That includes supporting the dual, supporting the TSI preparation. That's actually going to happen in two ways. We've got a handful of students that are signed up to go to Temple College at the end of July and take a TSI boot camp class. And then in August, they will take the TSI assessment, and those are incoming ninth graders. And then our ninth graders next year will have TSI prep embedded in their Advanced Social Studies course, and they'll be able to test in February so that if they want to take dual-credit as 10th graders, they'll be able to. We'll continue to expand dual-credit opportunities and also increase recruitment. And then as well, we'll continue to work with the high school on their advanced academics plan, which is really focused on monitoring instruction as well as monitoring data and really, you know, not having a mindset that they're an advanced teacher, so they're okay, but really having an expectation that everybody grows, that everybody uses data to, to drive their instruction and their practices. And so we have given you a lot of information. I hope that it's given you insight into the things that have happened this year in advanced academics and the things that we're looking forward to in the year to come. Do y'all have any questions for us?
Any questions for Dr. Watson and Dr. Roger? It, it really is exciting. This is, we have come a long ways. Yeah.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Always exciting. Item C is facilities and operations, Mr. Boyd. No items tonight. Item D is finance. One, discussion of the 2024, 2025 projected revenue to include changes and/or impacts to local, state, and federal funding. Mrs. Stanford, welcome.
Good evening, Board President, Board of Trustee members, and Dr. Ott. I find it really funny that budget seems to clear out a room except for all of those that have to work on it with me. But tonight, we're going to take a first look at all of the revenues for the proposed budget for next year to include any changes and impacts to local, state, and federal funding. This discussion is different from last year because this is a new requirement for the Financial Integrity System Rating of Texas, or formerly known as, you guys, the First Rating. And so school finance is already a complex topic to discuss. So this is our best attempt, mine and Donna Allerman's attempt, to provide a simplified explanation for the upcoming budget considerations. So there are three funds, general debt service and child nutrition, that the board is legally required to adopt. There are many other local, state, and federal grant funds that supplement the general fund, but they do not require board approval. The campus process, or the budget process is a part of a continuous cycle of planning and evaluation to achieve campus and district goals. Although the budget is only for one fiscal year, it typically spans multiple years to be able to plan, prepare, and evaluate. Here is a snapshot of the 2024, '25 budget timeline. First, I think it's important to note that we entered this planning cycle with adopting a deficit budget for the '23, '24 school year with no legislative relief. Therefore, that drove three budget priorities. One, no adverse circumstances. So what this means is no riffs or unplanned cuts. Two, we were trying to keep all adjustments away from the classrooms. And three, provide staff with a minimum of a 1% raise. To meet these first two requirements, budget discussion started one month earlier than the normal timeline with Dr. Ott's aggressive goal of completing the budget for the general fund by the end of March. At first, I wasn't sure if this was capable, but we did it. In April, we received the preliminary property values to begin projecting the tax rate models, which accounts for 48% of the general fund revenues. In May, we had a finalized budget ready to present to you guys, including the end-of-year projections for '23, '24. However, as you know, Mother Nature had another story in plan. They decided our, our community experienced a natural disaster and our entire district gracefully pivoted to meet the requirements for the school year in terms of student minutes and end-of-course exams. Our end-of-year projections now are unknown due to the still pending, or due to still defining the extent of all the damages to include insurance deductibles and uncovered expenses. An example of that is we found out last week that insurance will not cover the hail damage to the CTE wing exterior metal panels. And so general fund will have to cover that expense to repair. The disaster recovery expenses will span both the '23, '24 and the '24, '25 budget years. But more details to follow later on. This brings us to June, which you will notice is highlighted in yellow. You get to hear from us multiple times. We get to clear out the room to hear about budget before we actually adopt the '24, '25 budget on June 26. And so then we have July, which we actually received the certified property values after we've adopted our budget. In August, we get the, we'll have updated end-of-year projections for last year, which is currently this year, to bring to you guys. And then in September, we'll actually adopt a tax rate. And then it's not until December, early February, when we start to get a preliminary look on how the state is going to pay us on our property values, after we've already started our budget year in July. So the general fund accounts for the district's operating budget and supports the district's instruction, instructional support, administration, and daily operations. For the '24, '25 school year, we had to overcome the following budget challenges. 2023 legislative session ended with no additional revenue added. Twenty-two, twenty-three legislative session ended with no additional revenue added to the base, um, added to the basic allotment. The basic allotment therefore has not changed since twenty-nineteen, resulting in no inflation adjustments and a twenty percent decrease in our purchasing power. In total education funding, Texas currently ranks thirty-ninth out of fifty-one states. This includes the District of Columbia. But when considering state funding only, Texas ranks number forty-eight out of fifty-one states because we have an, a per, a per student amount of thirty, three thousand seven oh six underneath the national average. Esser federal funding provided during COVID to help support the return to in-person instruction also expires this year and we used approximately eight million per year since the twenty-twenty, twenty-one school year to balance the general fund budget. These revenues were not part of the general fund budget, however, we did reclassify expenditures from general fund over to Esser and so that will take an impact on this budget. School health and related services, also known as SHARs. Program allows for Texas ISDs to request reimbursement for Medicaid health-related services. There was a negotiated deal behind the scenes with the federal government and Texas Education Agency that reduced the Medicaid reimbursement rate by twenty-three percent. So that equates to us by one million dollars loss every year from here on out. So here is a chart or a visual graphic that I thought would be um, good to walk through because we have three different types of funding that really play into the general fund. The district state funds entitlement is comprised by the, determined by the basic allotment and the characteristics of each student in the district. Generally, the public perception is that when local values go up, the more local revenue is generated. However, this is not necessarily the case with the passage of House Bill Three. You guys have probably heard about the funding buckets. I know I used that description last year. And so the funding bucket is basically your tier-one entitlement made up of your attendance rates and your local tax collections. If local funds fill up three-quarters of this bucket, then the state only funds a quarter because it can never overfill the actual bucket entitlement. So total revenues then means that it will never overflow, so no additional revenue is ever generated from that model. In twenty-three, twenty-four, the homestead exemption increased from forty thousand to a hundred thousand by the state legislator in the summer of twenty-twenty-three. Now remember, we adopt our budget in June and so the state legislature passed, passed this after our budget was already implemented last year. And then it was approved by voters in November of twenty-twenty-three. With House Bill Three and the increase in homestead exemptions, our local property tax collections actually decreased and the state had to pay a hold harmless amount to hold revenues flat. Therefore, the twenty-four, twenty-five local property tax collections and the state funding estimates are based on this new homestead exemption amount. And as a result, twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five is the first year since nineteen-twenty that state revenues will exceed the local revenues amount for Temple ISD. For other local revenue, the significant change is the loss of revenue due to the discontinuation of the Temple Learning Center. However, this program has always operated at a, at a loss each year, so the net effect to the total budget is actually going to be a cost savings. Total general fund revenues is projected to be a hundred and nine million dollars and this is a five-point-eight percent increase in revenues over last year. So since local property taxes are a primary source of funding for school districts, understanding how they work is important to understand the overall concept of public school finance. So a school district tax rate is comprised of two parts. In the last couple of weeks, you guys have seen Dr. Ott's uh, T-chart explanation. We learned in undergrad that T-charts in accounting meant something totally different, so there is a whole new meaning to them now. Um, so with the T-chart, there was one section that was the MNO and one section that is INS. The MNO part is the, is pays for the day-to-day operations of the budget and equates to the general fund. For the average citizen, this is similar to paying for the house repairs, car fuel and routine services, groceries, cleaning supplies and utilities. TISD's Board of Trustees sets the local property tax rate each year while the county appraisal district determines the market value of property within the county or in the district. In an area like Temple ISD where home values are rapidly increasing, even when the tax rate is lowered by tax compression, homeowners will likely see an increase in the total amount of taxes owed due to the higher property values. House Bill Three requires a lowering of the MNO tax rate in an effort to offset the impact of rising property values. However, the lowered MNO tax rate does not fully accomplish this objective. Based on current law and the information we know today, we are projecting additional compression for the MNO tax rate due to almost eight-point-six-seven percent increase in preliminary property value growth. We will be adopting the budget based on the MNO tax rate of point seven-four-three-seven, but we will later discuss our tax rates and officially adopt in September. Just know that the intent is to keep the total tax rate flat. That brings us to state revenues. TISD receives fifty-point-three percent of our funding from the state. State revenue is not divided equally across the thousand-plus Texas school districts, but is distributed using a complicated formula based on a variety of factors like property wealth, student enrollment and demographics. We are projecting a student enrollment of eight thousand nine twenty-two for next year, which is an increase of a hundred and forty students. The average daily attendance is the average number of students who come to class on any given day. If a school has a hundred percent ADA, then we would receive a hundred percent of the state funding allotment for that student. We are projecting an average daily attendance rate of ninety-two percent. So let's talk about that for a minute. Student attendance is very important. When students come to class, they not only increase their learning opportunities, but they also increase revenues that support classroom instruction. I know that's kind of something that they always hear from the budget office, but there's a whole lot of impacts to those students being in the classrooms every single day. For example, if our new Sampson Howard Elementary School has five hundred students with an average daily attendance of just ninety-two percent, then typically two-point-eight million in state aid would be generated. However, if we can increase their attendance rate to ninety-five percent, then additional ninety-two thousand four hundred dollars would be generated by that one campus alone. Basic allotment per student has remained flat since twenty-nineteen, just like we mentioned in action by the twenty-twenty-three tech uh, legislative session. Students that meet specific criteria generate awaited funding based on their attendance in the specific criteria. Examples include bilingual, special ed, career and technical education and even gifted and talented. Due to House Bill Three that was passed in twenty-nineteen, the only increase in revenue that we can, we can generate is a direct result of the increase in student enrollment, attendance rate and special characteristics. So here is a graphical representation of our enrollment trends. As of the twenty-three, twenty-four year, our student enrollment has returned to pre-pandemic enrollment levels. For twenty-four, twenty-five, we are projecting an increase of a hundred and forty students. The dark blue bars represent the K through twelve student population that generate an allocation of six thousand one six sixty basic allotment. The green bars represent the pre-K and early education student, student population that only generate a half-day basic allotment of three thousand eighty. The translucent, translucent bar represents our twenty-four, twenty-five projections. Next, we have visuals to show our attendance trends from twenty-nineteen, twenty to twenty-four, twenty-five. As of the twenty-three, twenty-four year, our attendance rate is still below the pre-pandemic levels. And for twenty-four, twenty-five, we are conservatively projecting a flat ninety-two percentage of pretend, uh, attendance rate. For the chart that you see labeled six weeks attendance rates for nineteen through twenty-two three, on the twenty-three, twenty-four column, when you look down for the six, six weeks, that could change due to the non-standard last week of school that we just had. So returning back to the relationship between local property tax collections and state funding, here's a graphical representation of local, state and federal revenue comparisons for twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-three, twenty-four. As you may recall, twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five is the first time since nineteen-twenty that state revenue slightly exceeded local revenues. Also remember the budget challenges previously mentioned. The reduction in federal funds by one percent of the total revenues from twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five is the reimburse, the reimbursement reduction of SHARs of a hundred million dollars annually from TISD here on out. The reimbursement reduction is felt statewide, so we're not in this boat alone. However, there was no warning during Christmas break twenty-twenty-three to even adjust for this. So we must also revisit um, recapture. Last year, we had to precautionarily plan for recapture, but it never did come to fruition. For twenty-four, twenty-five, however, we must also precautionarily plan for, for recapture of a hundred and twenty-one thousand nine eighty-four, which is less than point oh-two percent of our total revenues. State funding is intended to provide state aid to districts on an equalized basis. So recapture is a state's mechanism for making sure a district with high property values do not come, do not have more funding than a neighboring district without those high values. Districts with the highest local property wealth per student are required to give some of their local tax revenue back to the state and this is commonly referred to as recapture as you guys may know it as Robin Hood payments. The money sent back to the state through recapture comes from the money generated from the MNO portion of our tax rate that generates more revenue than needed to fund the tier-one entitlement. Or it could also be on the copper pennies um, that generate more money above the yield. We will talk more about copper pennies at our next time, um, but the amount that we are projecting to owe in recapture is included in the state revenue number of fifty-five million for twenty-four, twenty-five and the recapture we would owe is based on the copper pennies. The only way out of recapture is for certified property values to decline in July or if our enrollment will exceed our projections.
If you can go back, one of the things I'll say about this slide is um, a lot of times, if you look at the different topics going into next year, if you hear legislators saying, we are giving schools more money, well, in a literal sense, that should, uh, there's more, where the people are going to be actually, but that is not, because there's less money coming over. That is not the same thing as an increase in basic allotment. So those two things are very different.
And I will also say on this chart for twenty-three, twenty-four, this was before the actual hold harmless was put into place and the compression occurred. This is off of just what we adopted our original budgets on. So next, we need to talk about fund balance. Fund balance is the difference between assets and liabilities as of the close of the fiscal year. I know a lot of people come to me and say, well, isn't fund balance just like a savings account? And generally, yes, however, there is a portion of fund balance that is non-spendable. So you may ask, what are the benefits of having sufficient fund balance? Well, first, it prevents borrowing costs to cover cash flow deficits. Essentially, less borrowing results to higher bond ratings and reduce true interest costs as we discussed last week in the long-range plan presentation. Also, we are able to respond to unforeseen costs without interrupting classroom instruction long-term. So sufficient fund balance will allow us to cover the short-term costs due to the recent tornado while waiting for financial assistance from insurance and FEMA. There are five fund balance designations that I would like to discuss. The first one is non-spendable. The remaining four are the ones that we have to actually focus on. The first one is restricted for long-term debt obligations. This will be the twenty-twenty-three tax maintenance note proceeds that will be restricted at the end of this year for the funding of the Wildcat Stadium improvements. This is because the proceeds were actually received in the twenty-three, twenty-four year, but the projects will not begin until the twenty-four, twenty-five year. Then we have committed, which requires board action and we will be bringing to you a recommendation on June twenty-six to commit fund balance for the twenty-four, twenty-five payment for the first twenty-two, twenty-three tax maintenance note. This is because we have the revenue bond that is also about to pay off, but we have the tax maintenance note and so those two will overlap. We were able to use the sale of Dixon to offset this overlap for next year. Assigned fund balance requires superintendent recommend, recommendation only and then the final is unassigned, which is all remaining fund balance, not classified as other. Please remember the unassigned fund balance. So our CE local policy requires us to main at least three months operating expenditures in that unassigned unrestricted fund balance. Here is a visual aid to show our fund balance trends since twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two-one. The blue line for twenty-three and twenty-four are projections that were established in May based on the budget before accounting for the recent na, natural disaster. The green lines are what has actually occurred in the past. We will be updating these projections in August as further information becomes available, but the takeaway that I want you to hear is that the current proposed budget for twenty-four, twenty-five will contain to remain above the minimum CE local requirement. More to come. Then we move on to the debt service fund that accounts for the district's expenses directly related to paying existing voter, voter authorized debt. You may have heard that debt is a necessary tool to address the many challenges of providing a quality education. There is no other way for our district to fund facilities and other big-ticket items needed to keep up with growth. Ninety-three-point-six percent of revenues are local property taxes paid by homeowners and businesses. State funding is the result of the hold harmless provision that was implemented for the increase in homestead exemption first from twenty-five thousand to forty thousand and now to a hundred thousand. Six percent of TISD's debt service revenue comes from the state hold, hold harmless provision. The remaining revenue consists of interest income and total debt service revenue is projected to be twenty-six-point-seven million, which is approximately four-point-five or twenty-point-four percent increase over the prior year. All of this is a direct result of increasing property values alone. So we return back to the T-chart for the local property tax discussion. As you guys know, you guys um, will adopt the tax rate and the appraisal district actually sets the local property tax values. The INS tax rate is calculated based on the amount of principal and interest payments that are due on our current bonds within one year plus any board authorized deficences and less any amount of state aid that we receive. The INS tax rate is capped at fifty cents and over the last decade, the ratio of debt to taxable value has continued to be proportion, proportion, uh, proportion, I'm sorry. Thank you. In other words, school district debt increases as a value of taxable properties, both residential and commercial, continue to increase. And so here is that bar graph visual as well. The dark bars represent actual tax rates while the translucent bars represent our tax rate options for twenty-four, twenty-five. In twenty-two, twenty-three, the, the rate increased due to the sale of the twenty-two bonds. And twenty-three, twenty-four, the INS tax rate also increased due to the op, adopted bond deficents for twenty-sixteen and to minimize any fluctuations in the tax rate in preparation for the twenty-twenty-four bond sale. At this point in time, the debt service budget is built upon an INS tax rate that is projected to hold the tax rate steady based on state compression. All of this is subject to change by the time we officially adopt in September. Next, we have the child nutrition fund that accounts for the district's expenses directly related to feeding our students. Child nutrition local revenue consists of money collected for student à la carte items such as ice cream, chips, extra entrees, adult meals and any proceeds from catering activities. The local revenue collected is about three-point-four percent of their total revenue. Federal revenue is the national school lunch and breakfast programs that provide nutritionally balanced, low-cost meals to children each day. As a result of our economically disadvantaged numbers, school meals may be the only source of a hot meal our students receive on a given day. Ninety-five-point-one percent of the program's total revenues are from these federal reimbursements. Total revenues for the child nutrition fund are projected to be seven million, which is approximately a twelve-point-three percent increase over last year's revenues. So at your places, each of you should have a printout called district planning revenues. The format of this revenue recap is the same format that you've seen in prior years, however, we've significantly reduced the amount of funds reported to only the funds that you guys legally adopt. The first three left columns are the fund numbers and descriptions of the revenue accounts. The next column is the fund balance at the end of our fiscal year of last year. So not what we're about to end the year on, but what we know to be true in fact today. The next column, or to talk through that, the fund balance at the end of twenty-two, twenty-three for the general operating fund was thirty-three-point-four million. For child nutrition, it was two-point-eight and for debt service, it was six-point-eight. The next column of information is the twenty-two, twenty-three actual end-of-year data followed by the twenty-three, twenty-four current year budget, which is not intended to be a projection of any kind and the twenty- the 24, 25 proposed budget that is based on the planning amounts in current law. At the top, you will see ADA numbers listed, followed by tax rates for the three fiscal years. The 24, 25 tax rate listed is the total tax rate as the MNO and INS tax rates are unknown at this time, but will remain to keep a flat tax rate. The next columns show the increase and decrease in revenues comparing for 24, 25 to 23, 24 and the percentage of changes. So to recap, the takeaways. The budget challenges that we're facing is no new funding since 2019 to help offset inflation, 20% decrease in purchasing power and a decrease in federal funding with Esser and SHARs. Therefore, we have some budget priorities. No adverse circumstances. Keep adjustments away from the classrooms and provide a 1% compensation increase. This is the first year since 2019 that state funding will exceed local property tax collections, but will not contribute any additional revenue. We are projecting recapture amount based on copper pennies, which is subject to change once we get final property values and find out where our student enrollment lands. We are projecting 8,922 students for next year. We are conservatively still projecting a 92% attendance rate. All of this while still maintaining a three-month unrestricted, unrestricted fund balance. Any questions?
Members, any questions? Ms. Stanford? Thank you. This is an excellent presentation, very concise and this is about as clear as I've ever seen it. This is, this is excellent. Thank you.
I'd like to say, Brandy, Renaud and Sarah, my goodness, these are the best presentations I've seen in years.
Yeah.
You guys have done a fabulous job.
This is great.
All three of you, really.
Yeah. Very much so. Item E is student services and no items tonight. Item F is board committee reports. First, facilities committee meeting minutes, May 20th, 2024. Mr. Gaines?
Thank you, Mr. Posey. Board facility committee, uh, was held at Sampson Howard Elementary. Executive summary of the meeting was heard Thursday, May 30th, 2024. Meeting was called to order at, um, 4:10 PM. Dr. Ott and Ms. Stanford provided an overview of budget scenarios and the tax rate considerations. Mr. Boyd presented pricing for furniture purchased for Hectopy Garcia and the purchase and installation of weight room flooring at the Athletic Performance Complex. The committee unanimously approved both recommendations. Mr. Boyd presented an update on all bond expenditures and provided a summary of the safety grant priorities. I skipped one there, I apologize. Dr. Ott presented a request for waiver for missed educational time due to tornado events. The committee unanimously approved the recommendation. Mr. Boyd presented an update on all bond expenditures, provided a summary of safety grant priorities. Finally, committee members toured Sampson Howard campus. The meeting was adjourned at, uh, 5:40 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines. Next is the policy committee meeting minutes, May 29th, 2024. Mrs. Cook?
The policy committee met May 29th at 4:00 PM. Meeting was called to order at 4:00. Dr. Ott and Ms. Stanford presented a budget update. Current end of year numbers and next year's potential revenue options were discussed. Tax rate implications were also discussed. Details regarding a missed school day waiver for May 28th were presented and discussed. The waiver will be on the agenda at the May facilities committee meeting for consideration by the board. The meeting was adjourned at 5:01 PM.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Uh, being no other business, we are adjourned. Thank you very much for attending tonight.